... This is a study session and the presentation of fiscal year 2025 recommended budget. Trustee Taylor has agreed to serve as clerk during this meeting, so trustee Taylor, please take your role.
Certainly. Trustee Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy, absent. Trustee King, absent. Trustee Taylor, here. Treasurer Kavanaugh, here. Clerk Christie, absent. Supervisor McCray?
Here.
Form's present.
Form's present. Okay, I'm not wasting any time. We're going to turn this right over to our finance director to go through his presentation on this lovely budget.
Well, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the annual budget presentation. Before I dive in, most of this evening, as usual, will be focused on the PowerPoint presentation, which I believe everybody has a copy of. I did bring a few copies of the printed budget, but I did not print it, not for everyone. Assuming many of you probably brought your own, but if we do need them, I have a few up here. So with that, I'm going to dive right into the budget presentation that begins on April 1st of 2024, starting with our general fund discussion. So if you open to, they're not numbered, but the first big chart here, you can see an overall picture of our general fund. And I make the comment, you know, I have general funds starred, and the reason I have it starred here is because this is the first budget that we're doing using the new uniform chart of accounts. And as part of that process, that was the process whereby, over the last several months, the finance and accounting departments worked to update all of the numbers that we use for funds and departments and accounts to the new standard from the state of Michigan. And as part of that process, we moved the special assessment district into its own fund. So this year, I tried to kind of present everything with the two kind of mashed together, but then after this year, I probably will really just report them separately. This first chart shows what the general fund looks like without the SAD in it, and that's really why we see it go from this year's budget, which was projected at $43 million, down to $34 million. That missing $9 million is the SAD money that is now being reported in a separate fund. So we will talk more about the SAD. Of course, the money is not gone. It's just being reported in a different place. When you take that into consideration, we have been very consistent over the last several years, and as you know, and we have been working to improve our fund balance and get us into a better position overall. As always, I just want to make sure I remind everyone that fund balance does not mean cash. Fund balance means cash and all of our other assets. And a lot of our assets are tied up with equipment, buildings, capital, things of that nature. So it has to do with the value of those things. It does not necessarily mean cash. But we are in a good position, and right now, the recommended budget that is before you has a very small surplus of approximately $182,000 on an overall budget of $34 million. Moving on to the next slide, the next several slides are just kind of a synopsis of what has changed in terms of revenue. The first thing is that the recommended budget does recommend a reduction in the SAD. So we were able to reduce the SAD from 8.15 mils down to 7.6, I believe is the number off the top of my head, 7.65 in this past year. And we think that if everything continues the way it is right now, we should be able to lower it again to 7.25. And that'll be the lowest level that the SAD has been at since 2016, which is really good news, and I think goes to show both the impact of the changes that have been made, but also our efforts of being good stewards of the taxpayer funds. We told them that the SAD would go both up and down as necessary to accommodate the needs of the department. Taxable values for this upcoming year, I'm expecting to go up by the max of 5% based on the rate of inflation. Inflation was either at 5.2 or 5.4 for the year that is part of this tax year, and so that is capped at 5%. But none of this, of course, is final until after the March board review, when residents have the opportunity to appeal their property valuations. State constitutional revenue sharing is projected to increase by 3% for fiscal year 2025. This is the one that's based on sales tax, and the state's projections fluctuate throughout the year. They meet typically three times a year, sometimes more often if necessary, to review both what has been sold and what they're forecasting to sell in terms of sales tax. So this number does change quite often. But right now, it's ranged anywhere from 2.5 all the way up to 4, and so it seems like it'll probably be right around 3% for next year. PPT reimbursement continues to be down. We're down nearly 20% in PPT over the last three years. And PPT itself is about 3%, a little more than 3% of our overall revenues. Now, the state has been using surplus funds to make us whole in PPT, but they're doing that above and beyond what was budgeted. So they're publishing that what they're going to give us is this $1.2 million. And then what they've been doing is, well, we had extra money, so we're going to give you 1.6. But from a budget perspective, I can't assume they're going to continue to do that, so I'm going off of the numbers that they have on their website. Going to the next slide here, charge for services, franchise and PEC fees finally seem to be stabilizing. These make up about 1.8% of our revenues and are tied directly to cable services. And I make the comment here about lobbying remaining necessary on this issue. There have been several bills that have been before both the state, house, and senate, but also before Congress, that has been discussion about whether or not streaming services should be required to pay these fees as well. And when we think about the fact that most people caught the cord, the proverbial cable cord, and went to some form of a streaming service, they're still receiving and utilizing the airwaves in the right of way in the same way they were before. They're just using it through a slightly different medium. But we're losing out on that revenue that we used to receive for many, many years that specifically targeted both to allow them to have that access in our township, but also for public education and government. That's the PEC funds. So things like paying for the broadcast of these meetings, paying for, you know, videos or marketing messages that go out using PEC funds, this is what drives that. And that number, like I'm saying, it's stabilizing. It's still significantly lower than it used to be. So if you hear about that bill, we want them to pay those fees. I already talked about PPT reimbursement, interest rates and interest revenues. So pre-COVID, based on the interest rates back then, this was about 1% of our revenue. Currently, it makes up about 3% of our revenue, which goes to show you how high interest rates have come. We are projecting, I know Treasurer Kavanaugh and I hear often from our investment advisors that these rates will come back down, but we are not anticipating that they will come back down anywhere near as quickly as they went up. So I think interest rates, I think the days of very low interest rates are gone for the foreseeable future. The positive for us is that means we get more investment revenue here. And the cost allocation report, just to remind everyone that we first implemented this in the summer of 2020, and this is updated each year, and this allocates the cost of all the central services in the township and charges them back to all the other departments and other funds based on their usage. Moving on to the next slide, the COPS grant. Last year was the last year of the COPS grant, and we recently found out that it has been randomly selected for federal audit, which I know makes our chief of cotton very excited, right? Yeah.
No, no packer than just side of the table, Lee.
We're all going to.
Court fines, good news here, have finally stabilized. We have already received more in fiscal year 2024 than we did in all of fiscal year 2023. So this is a good sign in the court fines area is that the court administrator, Matt Suwicky, and the judges, Judge Killeen and Judge Hartunian, do a really nice job of trying to modify their expenses based on their revenue, and I certainly appreciate that very much. There's nothing that they can directly do so much about the court fines if citations don't necessarily come in, but so it's nice to see this number going back up. The other thing that was exciting there for them is that a couple of years ago, you may remember they started an alcohol screening program, and that program is now in the black and making money. So that's good news there. EMS revenue is finally, for the first time, back up over pre-pandemic levels. This is another 4% of our overarching revenue. And cell tower funding, the contract at Crown Castle has expired, and Director Stokes and I and Speaker McCray have been actively negotiating a new contract there. There was talk about that just today. Yeah, exciting, right? The next slide here is a 10-year look back at our property taxes and assessments going back to 2015. You can see all of the various different types of millages that have been assessed in our projection. So our projection for 2024 is that we would have a total local levy of 24.22 mils. That would be the lowest local tax levy rate in this 10-year history. We do have the one operating millage that expires. Well, I shouldn't say that. The deputy clerk and I are trying to determine if it expires this year or expires next year. It has been on my chart for years, ever since I came here, is that it is from 2004 to 2025, but that would be 21 years, and it was a 20-year millage. So we're trying to clarify exactly, is this year the last year we can assess it or next year? Either way, I know the board has been talking about the fact that we will be looking to renew that operating millage this August. All right, next slide. The property taxes and assessments, how have they changed since our peak taxable value year? So we reached peak taxable values in the township in 2007. And at that time, in order to levy the services that we provided in 2007, we needed a total levy of 14.5495 mils. In order to do the same thing last year, we needed 24.6, and I'm projecting 24.2 for this new budget. So this goes to the impact of, you know, Proposal A and Headley, and that in order to provide those same level of services is requiring us to have a tax levy rate that is 66% higher than it was when we had peak taxable values. That is better than it was the year before, when it was at 69%, but ideally, that number would be much closer to zero than where it's at. So it's trending in the right direction, but that really is that impact that we have due to Proposal A and Headley. The next slide is a discussion about how reliant are we on the SAD. So looking at the fiscal 2025 budget in comparison to 2024, you can kind of see I've broken out in here how, what percentage of their budget is coming from where. And you can see that we had a slight decrease in our projection of our dependency on the SAD from 32% to 31% for those public safety operating millages. So that's a good thing, but we still have nearly a third of the department being paid for with the SAD. And then down at the bottom, you can see again, just so people understand, back at our peak taxable value in 2007, we only needed three mils for police and fire operations, and that was 20% of the overall mils that were assessed. Today, we need 8.5 mils in order to do the same thing, and that's 35% of our overall mils. So that's everything about the tax levy and the millage rates. The next several slides are looking at our overarching revenues. So here, I have combined the general fund and the SAD revenues into all of the remaining charts in here, so that we're comparing apples to apples. So this first chart shows you the makeup of where all of our revenues come from. So one thing that is good here is that the percentage that is coming from property taxes has declined. So last year, that number was 58% instead of 56%, which means that we're doing a better job of diversifying where our revenue streams are coming from. So a big part of that, of course, is due to investment income going up to 3%. And federal revenues at this point are forecasted at being zero. And the reason I have that at zero is because ARPA at this point has already all been received and realized, and we are not aware, and we haven't officially received any other federal grants. So I would expect that at some point, when we get to like the amended budget, we'll have received probably the $2 million earmark for the recreation center from Congresswoman Talib's office, so that'll change this chart. But we haven't actually received it yet. So until we do, I don't know exactly when that's coming, and I didn't want to put it in the numbers.
We don't need that.
Right, yeah. Lot of paperwork on that one. And then down below is just the detail line item of what all of those different areas are. So the next several slides talk about what has changed within the general fund in terms of appropriation. So the first slide here is all about personnel. So wages and fringe benefits make up 72% of our budget for fiscal 2025. Last year, it was 74%. We still have the same split of 46% wages, 54% benefits. And ideally, it really should be the other way around. So what this means is that for every dollar in wages, we have to budget $1.19 for the benefits. We would ideally like it to be where for every dollar in wages, we only had to budget, you know, 80 cents for benefits. That would make us much more wage competitive. We are still finding that the benefits piece is making this difficult for us to be wage competitive, and this is why. The budget does assume that raises and step increases occur as contracted and based on Ron Berksobers' recommendations, which I emailed out to the board on Friday evening. Human resources for this year, and Director Washington must not have been able to make it this evening, but he has been working on rolling out a wellness incentive program this spring. This is a program where you would be rewarded as an employee for doing things that would incentivize you to be healthy, right? So it could be things like, if you get a Fitbit and you track that you do 30 minutes of activity every single day, maybe you would get a gift card for something. That's what this type of program is about. And so he is hoping to launch that this spring. He's been working with our health insurance brokers on that program. General fund pension costs have increased from 8.37, increased to 8.37 million from 7.44. This is an overall increase of $900,000. The overall, vast majority of that is within public safety, which went from 5.86 to 6.73. And this is unfortunately really reflective of our most recent valuation. Our valuation smoothed the last five years of returns into them, right? So when you have a really good year or a really bad year, it doesn't hit you all at once. It's smoothed out over time. The problem we're having at the moment is that for the last five years, we're all negative years. And so that negatively impacted us for this evaluation, which is why when we received our most recent reports, we saw that our funding level had gone down slightly based on that smoothing process. So that had an impact on this increase. The other thing that had an impact here is that based on the advice of the actuary, even though based on the smoothing and the trend, we could lower the amount we're putting towards the pension, the recommendation was, why lower it? Keep it the same, because now you're just putting surplus towards your unfunded liability. So we budgeted assuming we were leaving it the same, which means we're actually putting surplus in there, which is a good thing. The other thing that impacted this, of course, was the fact that on the police and fire side, they are still absorbing the changes from the most recent experience study and the new mortality tables. And then finally, the other thing that impacted this number, which I think will work in our favor, is Japhin and I worked quite a bit with the actuaries to understand how are they projecting for vacancies within their number? And we found that the way that that report is done from the actuaries, it doesn't really account for the vacancies. So it calculates the number based on the payroll of what you actually paid. But then if you hire people during the year, those people are accruing benefits. And if you strictly do this based on what you paid from the prior year, you're not properly setting aside for the people who are accruing the new benefits, the new hires. So we got the number from him to find out, well, what do we need to put aside then to make sure that as we hire new people, we aren't now getting behind? I know, that's really complicated. So but that's why that number on the police and fire side changed so much. But I think in the end, it's going to be really good for us, because it's making sure, like, long story short, right? We're putting in more money than we are obligated to, and that's a good thing. I do want to give Japhin an opportunity to kind of review this handout that she prepared, because several of the board members asked me questions specifically within the budget about what was happening with the general employee pension numbers. So that would be, that's this that she passed out, and I'm going to let Japhin talk about that.
Everyone has one, right? So basically, what this is showing you is the last four years of, it's just the MERS pension, just, you know, general employees, and then broken down by division, and how many active employees are in each of those divisions. The average longevity, so, you know, the average years of all the employees in that division, the annual cost for those divisions, and then the cost per employee. So the kind of the point of this is to show you that year over year, we're basically staying the same or pretty similar from year to year, the pension costs for MERS. However, where you're seeing a difference in the budget within the departments, that's because when we budget for MERS pension costs, we go based on who's in each division. And then we determine, well, that's from our, we have a participant list. We determine which division people are in, and we base it on, we base the cost on those employees being in those divisions. So if Division 1 is, we'll just make it really simple, but if it's $10,000 per employee, then you're going to have three employees, you'll have $30,000 a year, just, you know, to be really basic. But we then, based on who's in each division, it's going to correlate into the department. So if you have a department that has, you know, a higher average longevity based on, you know, kind of like more of the divisions in the top of the categories, because those are the older ones, those departments are going to carry more of a cost for the general pension. And as, that's another thing. So as people retire in those divisions, they'll shift from active employees to retirees. So they'll, you'll see like a decrease in the number of employees. Now, however, the cost for the pension will still be the same for that division, and it will be still based on the number of active employees. So while, you know, some of them, you'll see they'll go down each year, it's still going to be the same cost, just over less employees. So that's going to change your allocation in the departments. Does that kind of make sense?
Over less active employees. I think the one that makes the most sense is looking at Division 11. Like, there's only 10 employees there now, 10 active employees. But if you look back at 2022, at that point, there were 19 active employees. So if you take the number that was the budget divided by 19, that's a much smaller number per employee than if I take that number and divide it by 10. And so what happened is those 19, those nine people retired, they're now on the retirees' side of the division, but we assess the cost only based on the actives. So as the number of actives goes down, the cost per active goes up, because they're kind of bearing the cost of the whole division, including the retirees. So that's why you're seeing those changes and spikes in what's happened in some of the departments. It's based on as we, as people are retiring and these numbers are changing, and based on the seniority of the employees that are in those departments, it's impacting how on the seniority of the employees that are in those departments, it's impacting how it shakes out, but the overall total number hasn't really changed much at all. Does that make sense? Because I got that from a few of you, so I just want to make sure. All right, let's move to the other side. So we're on the next slide about capital costs. We are moving into year six of our capital plans for the police and fire departments, which has helped stabilize things tremendously, as you know. We continue to transition to enterprise fleet management, which has been going well now that supply chain issues for the most part are more resolved than they were. It's better. It's better. I know, stop it.
You get a deal.
In the township marquee, we fully retired the debt for the marquee in this current budget year. The recommended budget includes $150,000 for a new roof. The numbers that have come back are more in the 250, 280 range. Those came back after I had already done this, so the board may want to consider if they want to allocate additional money there for the roof, or if they want us to budget for that over two years. But that was what changed in the marquee budget specifically, is this capital expense of the roof.
Adam, where did costs come from? Because that seems super high for such a small building. Like it's a small building.
It's a big building.
One of the directors, either Drabansky or Dennis did it, yes.
I got it from the consultant help us with this. He gave me what the square footage is right now, but I think that's 13,000 square foot.
No way.
Yeah. It's a giant building, just one giant circle. See, here it's different because it was kind of, this is, this is only 8,000 square feet, and that's 13,000.
It doesn't look 13,000 square feet.
No, it really doesn't, right?
It looks, I'd like say five.
You know, you do it this coming year, you get a good price, you know, it's different. But he was giving us a price that was higher than here, but this was two-story also.
Yeah.
But that's what they're saying about what the market was. I think we got this price six weeks ago, something like that.
So when do you actually want to do, when are you actually going to get it done?
Oh, the summer.
This summer.
So this year, though?
Yeah.
That's the plan, yeah. It'll take time to get everything. Like when we did this, it took us six months to get everything from the, you know, slow ball from China.
You got to get all the materials.
Yeah, the materials are very hard to get right now, still.
Here at Town Hall, we plan to replace the main entrance doors. Director Johnson's been working on getting updated quotes for that as we speak, but I don't expect it to actually happen until we're into the new budget year. For animal control, we were supposed to get a new box and truck for her this year, and there were delays and issues. It has been officially ordered.
Again.
Again, yes. And so we are very hopeful that it will arrive in the next few months, but it has been ordered.
We're hoping by the end of the year.
I'm going to go with the next few months.
That's not hard.
All right. The next slide is really mostly about the SAD. So the first thing is about central dispatch. Based on the recommended budget, I was able to move the entirety of the central dispatch that was in the SAD back into the general fund. So that reduces our reliance there. And that came at changing some things with staffing a little bit, which we're going to talk about on the next couple of slides. But I think you'll see what we're kind of proposing, and the chiefs have been supportive of this for now, so we'll get into that in a minute. In the police department, we had just increased the budget allocation for standard building maintenance from 30,000 to 40,000 for this year. And as that building is getting older, it's just needing more and more repair. So over the course of two years, we're going from 30 to 40 to 70. They just lost their hot water heater yesterday or over the weekend. So that building is over 30 years old at this point, and so it is definitely going to need some upkeep as we move forward.
Yep.
The fire SAD, the full principal interest payments for the new station did begin this year, and our plan is to pay off the ladder truck two years early. And then, so with the Act 345 millage, we will leave the millage rate at the current level of 10.4. This should allow us for an additional contribution towards OPEB of 1.5 million. The next couple of slides are all about staffing levels. The first one is what changed in the general fund that's not public safety. There were really only three things that changed in the general fund. The first is that we had a significant increase in elections personnel, both due to Proposal 2 passing in 2022 and having four elections in 2024. We have February, May, August, and November. And with the passage of Proposal 2, in addition to the fact that we now have to run the AV counting board for nine days before each election, so that's 36 days of running that counting board instead of four. We also have the new requirement that either 30 or 45 days before each election, we now have to send someone out. So we have to pay for the time and the mileage to go check all of those drop boxes that have been distributed around the township that we were required to install. So that impacted our costs here in this department. We also added a benefits coordinator in the HR and finance departments. It's in the recommended budget right now in finance, but after discussions, I think actually I'm going to move it over to the HR side for budgeting purposes, but the numbers will be the same. And then we've also added a part-time IT coordinator, project manager within here. And my goal here with that is that, you know, we moved Chuck from being five days a week to being four, and then he and I have talked about going down to three days in the new budget year. We've increased that VC3 is here two days a week instead of one day a week. When this comes online, I think that will go back down to one day a week. So I'm anticipating that this position, as it comes online, both as Chuck lowers his time, it'll also reduce our need to have VC3 be onsite as often. So we'll receive savings on the flip side.
Adam?
Yeah.
Where does that leave our communications specialist? Or is that going to be wrapped up into this IT program, project manager somewhere, or is it gone?
I left, no, I left it budgeted exactly as it is.
Left it in?
Yep. Yep, these were the only changes I made on staffing recommendations. All right, the next one is the police department. So the recommendation is the budget per this chart. Traditional staffing in the police department would be 50 POs, if I did my math right. Yeah, you just have 64 and no cadets. We're recommending to go 43 and six for now. By doing this and leaving the SAD at the level needed to fund it, as if it was still funded at 50, that is how we're doing things like paying off the engine early. That's also how we are going to do this massive dispatch, radios, preps, and encryption upgrade in the police department that is around $750,000. So the original plan was to pay for that over the course of multiple years through our capital plan. And if things change within the staffing, we can still go back to do that. But in the interim, if we leave the, if we, well, actually, we're still lowering the SAD, but if we lower the SAD to that 7.25, that will still give us enough to be able to do that whole project at once. So we wanted to make sure that we left the SAD so that it could still budget for staffing as normal, but while we have the opportunity, let's take care of some of these other capital things with that excess in there.
Get out in front of it.
Get out in front of it, right. So that's what's happening in the police department. And in the fire department, similar, we formally added to the firefighter staffing this firefighter trainee program, which is where we assume that somebody comes in who already has their paramedic license, but they have not been through the firefighter academy, and so we would send them through that program. So if we add those people in, we would reduce the firefighter staffing temporarily while we do this. And on the flip side of that, we will pay off the ladder truck early in the fire department. Did I explain that right, Chiefs?
Just a quick question as to whether or not any numbers have been run about having an ACO on the weekend?
I did not put any numbers on this for an ACO on the weekend.
Okay. I think we'd be struggling to hire that physician. There's other communities that have had that position posted for years without any applicants, not even any qualified applicants, any.
Any.
Yes.
All right, just curious, because I know that there's a lot of dogs and such that happen on the weekends and just, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Are we asking questions now, or are we going to wait till the end of the presentation and then ask our questions in turn? How do you want to do it?
Yeah, how you want to do that.
Why don't we get to the general fund first?
Sure.
We're almost done with it, so.
I can wait.
The next slide is just talking about the fact, as I said, we created a new fund, Fund 205, for the public safety SAD. One of the things that we think will help with this is it will increase transparency and ease of tracking for the SAD funds, is it won't be buried within the general fund. You'll be able to go right to that fund and look at exactly what's going on there with the SAD funds. But when we get our annual audit from Plant Moran, it will still be rolled up into the general fund as it is now. So it's a separation for our internal purposes only. As I said, we're going to recommend lowering the millage down to 7.25, and then here, those are all the major capital projects. So the 750 for the dispatch encryption prep project, repairing the backup engine. So we have a need for that. The chief is estimating that will be about $50,000 to do that, but he says that we will recoup that investment when it comes time to sell the engine, paying off the ladder engine early. We're also slated to receive a new engine this year. That was the one that the board approved in 2022, but it'll be arriving in 2024. 25. I thought that was the squat.
No.
Has something changed?
Time frame. They're pushing, they're just pushing out a little farther.
Is it still going to be in this fiscal year?
Possibly. They're not 100% sure, so.
Okay.
It could be that March of 2025.
Well, March would be okay, okay.
Depends on when they complete. They're waiting on parts and everything. They're kind of behind schedule a little bit.
Okay. All right, next slide is looking at how our expenditures made up. This chart within the general fund, the 72% is personnel. That's down from 74%. And that number seems to fluctuate between 72 to 76, just depending on the year. Nothing else really of note there. The next one is the one that tells you the same thing, but by function. So 65% of the overarching budget is public safety. We have 7% is support, 3% is public works, 6% is recreation and culture, slivers, housing, community development, and then the remaining 19% is general government. So that's all pretty much standard of what it's been. So that is all the slides that are about the general fund. Trust me, Taylor.
Okay. So I want to kind of go back to, I think it's great that you're all thinking about, let's pay off the truck early, and let's lower the SAD, and these all sound like really super ideas because we're, we sound like we're doing great fiscally. But I also want to talk about the elephant in the room, which is healthcare and the cost of it, and how much it's costing our employees, and what we can do if we've looked at, I know that you guys have had some meetings, and I know that we've talked about this a little bit between us, and we've, you know, did the, we did a bonus at the end of last year to try to help ease that pain. But I don't know if we've really looked at the numbers, and I know that the fire union president did us a great service by collecting a lot of the information for us. But I also was looking at some information that HR Director Washington had given me last year regarding our HSAs and what it's just cost me as a family, so I can look at it and get a real grasp on it. And I don't know that we're really considering the huge financial impact this current health bill that we're on is costing our employees. And I know that the bonus helped ease that pain, but when I look at what I'm paying out of pocket just for two people, you know, and Jason's numbers support this, and it's even more for families. I've got two people, we have individual, two people and family. I'm paying over $7,200 a year for healthcare. Now, that does include the AV20, but it also includes the deductible that that township used to pay for. And I know that the thought process was, well, not everyone has to pay that deductible. Most of us who have to take medications will need that within the first three months. I mean, my son's on anti-seizure medicine that costs $1,100 for a three-month supply. So yeah, most of us do need that deductible. And when I look at the cost from 2022 even, our two-person out-of-pocket, my cost would have been 15, 14, 80, 90 a year. I now pay over $4,000 for the same plan a year. And the deductible has gone up considerably. The deductible used to be 14 and 28. My deductible now is 3,200 with a max out-of-pocket of 4,500. So the insurance has really, really gotten out of hand, and I think that, as you guys have talked about, it's really just a red spot on trying to recruit. And I think all of this, being able to put extra money towards OPEB and being able to pay off the truck early and being able to lower the SAD, those are all fantastic things, but not at the cost of not being able to hire, not being able to recruit. And on the backs of our employees, we really need to, in this budget year, look to see what we can do better, I think, about easing the healthcare costs on our employees and what that would look like impacting our budget. I'd really like a serious, I think now's the time to take a look at it before we get our budget done for '24, '25. And whether or not that means lowering the SAD like one point mil less and going back to 90-10, or not paying off the truck early and using that money to fund the HSA deductibles again, something. We can't keep saving at the cost of our employees and not just our employees that are working here, that are, that are absorbing this cost, even though they get pay raises, well, it's not really a pay raise, when out of my $13,000 salary, I'm paying over $7,200 in health insurance. That's killer. So I can't imagine with somebody with a family of fours even paying more, what that does to their annual income. So I would like to see the board seriously look at some numbers and whether or not saving is worth the expense of not being able to recruit and hire, because we're not being competitive with our benefits right now, I don't think. And we're hurting the employees with saving so much. I love saving, but not if it's going to cost us.
I mean, I think you bring up some valid points and are of discussion and consideration. The negotiations team did meet with the fire union recently, and we did receive that information from them. We also asked them for some information back that I don't know that they've been able to provide us yet.
They did.
No, we asked for some additional information.
Regarding, so we've got the RLE comparisons, I've got the fire department comparables, and I've got the healthcare comparables from 2021 to now and what all that looks like. And then we've got salary comparables, including everything. I mean, they built in everything from base salary to medic bonus to uniforms, holidays, total compensation. So they've got all those numbers to see where we're at in the way of being competitive. And, you know, out of 17 municipalities, we're at the bottom, almost.
Based on their chart, yes.
Yes. And I know that the healthcare, it's been a huge increase because I see the numbers myself and how it affects, you know. So I think that we need to take a serious look at it. I just really do, and see what that looks like. I just want to see how much of a cost if we bumped our employees to 90-10, how much would it cost if we kept 80-20 and we paid for their HSA? What impact does that have on our budget? And how would that impact whether or not we could still either maintain the SAD at the level that it's at, or if maybe it goes down, but doesn't go down like .25 points or .2 points, maybe it only goes down one point? What does that look like? And how does that impact the township budget? Because now's, I think now's the time when we're doing all of this. Because now's, I think now's the time when we're doing all of this, right? That's the whole purpose of us doing this right now.
I do just want to make sure you have a couple pieces of information. We don't set the deductibles, that's set by the IRS. So that is the lowest legally allowed deductible rate is at the 16 and 32. You can't offer an HSA plan that has a lower deductible than that. They set that. They used to be 14 and 28, now it's at the 16 and 32.
You're saying the IRS sets that and not Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Mm-hmm, that's IRS for to be an HSA plan. That's where that number comes from. Because you could have an HSA plan that's 4,000 and 8,000, 5,000 and 10,000, right? So this is the lowest deductible, HSA deductible plan that you can have in 2024 that complies with IRS guidelines, just so you know. We don't pick that number.
Yeah.
The other thing that has been out there that we have not, I believe it was sent over to them along with an LOU regarding a $10,000 recruitment incentive that we're still waiting to hear feedback on from the fire union from a couple weeks ago. But one of the things was that in December, that director Washington and I met with a company that did a benchmarking on our healthcare coverage and the total out-of-pocket costs in comparison to other governments and other companies of our size. And found that the total cost for the quality level of the insurance plan is actually better than normal. So what they said to us was that we may want to consider, that it seems like historically, we've always negotiated that you have a Cadillac plan for insurance in the contracts and everybody gets the Cadillac plan. Then maybe you don't do it that way. Maybe you should budget instead that everybody gets the Ford. And if they want to pay to upgrade to the Cadillac, you offer them that option. But we've been setting the default of the Cadillac instead of setting the default of the Ford.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, if the HSA is the way to go anymore. I mean, it was, what, six years ago when it was saving the township $2 million a year, even when we were paying their deductible? And now you're saying we're not paying their deductible, we're charging them more towards paying their plan and it's costing us more. So something's not right, something's not working anymore. And I think we need to reevaluate that to, you know, if this isn't the right plan anymore for us, then yeah, I think we need to look at something different that can be more affordable. And we kind of did take away options, we made everybody go with this plan, this is it.
We did.
Take it or leave it. So because it was so, you know, you know, maybe you've got a young, single person who doesn't need this coverage. And you've got a family who needs better coverage. Maybe we need to spread that out and that will help, we need to do something.
The other thing I can share with you is that supervisor McCray and I have been exploring going, getting a new broker for healthcare again. We've had some concerns with our current broker and it's been several years. And so it may be time to do that again. Their initial analysis right now tells us that, you know, it's been a decade, the market has changed, that we may seriously want to look at going back to being self-insured.
Right.
Now, you can be self-insured and still have an HSA plan, you're just self-insuring the HSA plan. Their initial projections are that if we went back to being self-insured, even with the same plan, assuming that our claims and everything remains the same as what it's been for the last couple of years, that that could save us 600 to 800,000 dollars a year. Well, if that saves us 600 to 800,000 dollars a year, if we do that, we could absolutely then look at turning that money back into either wages or putting it back towards HSAs. So that is something that supervisor McCray and I, we just had that meeting a couple weeks ago as well.
So it's in the, so we're looking for a solution now?
Well, yes, I just want to say we are looking for a solution. That's why when we had the meeting, we talked about the bonus that we said we could do, the $10,000. And after a little scuffling, we agreed to share our information, what they had, we shared what we had with them. And now we're looking at the package, looking at what we can do. Because I agree, we need to do something. I mean, it's, and I understand where the firefighters are with it. And we're working on it.
Well, I'm sure Mercer's with it too, I mean, I know.
Well, but when I say the firefighters, whatever we do with them.
Yes.
This board has always been, whatever we do for one, we try to do for all. And that, I haven't heard anybody change that position. So if we're doing it for one, we got to do the same thing for everybody, the same opportunity.
Absolutely.
Because the insurance cost is the same for everybody. I mean, it's expensive.
To the chair.
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Just also, if you also don't forget, a piece of this is also the retirees. So please be conscientious also of cost effective, of the fact that we have them included because a larger group gets a better understanding of rates. So just be conscientious of that too.
Yeah, and you know, and that has been the other side too. You know, we've also been asked several times, like, why did we say Blue Cross? Riot Priority Health has become really, really big in the area. Who's the other one?
United Healthcare?
United. And they won't, they won't quote us. You know, every year, the brokers go out before they come back with the rates and they go to all the other healthcare companies and ask them, what would you quote Redford Township to be their insurance provider? They won't give us a quote. And every year, I mean, I have it, I can show it to you. The answer is either that they say they can't compete with Blue Cross or they say, we can't take Redford Township because you have too many retirees. You're too retiring heavy and we can't handle the retirees.
That's happened for several years. So is that not where we can have two separate plans, like maybe one for the retirees because of their needs? And they don't need the same type of insurance that, you know, we have multiple plans that we can offer?
I would love us to be in a situation where we offer multiple plans.
Yes.
I mean, for at least as long as I've been here, it seems that we've always just offered the one plan.
Since we went to the HSA.
Well, at least since we went to the HSA. And I understand that it happened before then too. It was, this is the plan the township offers.
No, before then, we had multiple choices.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had half, we had.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I would love, if we can get back to that point, I mean, I just, I think it would be great.
Okay.
So.
So maybe we can kind of put that on top of the prior. As we're budgetary numbers, so we can bill that pushing in. And like you said, we can decide what's the best route to go. And if we need to, you know, instead of putting money into the fund balance for OPEB or something, we might think in the back of our heads to save back a little bit of that, to look at switching us to a different plan. And hopefully, like you said, it'll save us money and we won't need to use any general extra fund dollars.
My advice right now in terms of how does it impact this budget, right? Because, you know, we have that wonkiness of the fact that this is a budget that starts in April. We're talking about healthcare that won't go into effect until January. And you don't have to actually set the tax levy until September. So I would suggest that we move forward as we are at the moment. But expect that before we come back for the tax levy in September, that we have recommendations for, this is what we can do for health insurance.
Because usually enrollment starts in October.
Right, and we have all of our numbers by then. This is what you could do if you wanted to pay for the HSAs for everybody. And you could, then we could, you could make that decision based on that information at that time.
So right now, we are at 80/20. There's no option to go to 90/10 until October.
Well, until the new, the new benefit year, which is January.
So it'll be January of 2025.
January 1st, right. And I'm just saying that this.
But we're the ones that are charging 80/20, we could change that at any time, Blue Cross isn't charging them 80/20.
Oh, yes, that is true, yes, that is true, right.
That's what I'm asking.
And the deductible is the township's.
Yeah, that's all are up to us and when we want to do that. Yeah, we're stuck with the HSA plan that we have. We're not stuck with how much we're charging our employees right now.
No.
So I really think that we need to take a close look at that, this budget year now, whether or not, what those numbers would look like if we can, you know, give them some relief. Even if, what does it look like to go to 90/10 and say to 80/20 for this budget year? How much would that cost us?
I mean, if I had to pick one over the other, I would not touch the 80/20, 90/10, I would do the HSA.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if we can crunch the numbers and if it's workable into this year's budget, then we need to do something until we can come up with a solution.
What number would you like to know?
How much? Well, would it cost if we were to fund the HSA for our employees?
In full?
Yes.
200,000?
Okay. And that's how much you were going to put towards paying off the truck early, right? 200,000 to pay off the truck early?
Well, I guess my question is, I think, well, I'd like to, we need to run the numbers because I would want to know.
That's what I'm asking.
If we do, well, if we do the 100%, how does that, what direct impact does it have on employees? How much, how much does your bill go down when you do that? Does it go down significantly?
It goes down, the amount, it goes down.
3,200 out, 3,200 for a family.
300 or 300?
Not 200,000, 400,000, but still.
So yeah, like right now, your deductible starts over January 1st, so we're right at the beginning of it. Right now, literally nobody's got any healthcare coverage until we hit the 3,200 mark and max of 4,500 out-of-pocket. So my 250 dollar a month.
That's not entirely true, but that's true for 95% of our employees, yes.
Yeah, like when I go to CVS tomorrow and they tell me my new prescription is 249 dollars, I got to fork over 249 dollars because I haven't met my deductible yet. And everybody's in that boat right now.
My age is 180 right now.
What's that?
My age is 180, it's in a CVS right now.
Yeah, and it hurts, like last time when Kevin's medicine is 1,100 dollars and I go in to get it refilled in January and I'm like, oh. Okay, what are you going to do? Not get your son his medication?
Right.
So it's the beginning of January, we're in budget talks, we need to talk about how we can relieve everybody now until we get a solution to this healthcare thing long-term. And I would like us to seriously find that money in this budget.
I agree. It's really, really tough already to recruit. And the healthcare, the healthcare costs are a major detriment to that effort. And I keep hearing this $10,000 bonus, what, what is that about?
We have been talking with, we had offered two years ago, last year, somewhere in there. We had received a grant in the police department where there was a $10,000 incentive for new hires or for lateral transfers that came over. And it was broken out over the course of a couple of years. So like you got, I think, $3,000 when you graduated the academy and $3,000 when you finished like FTO. And then like 2,000 at your one-year anniversary and 2,000 at like your two-year anniversary, right? It was this $10,000 incentive. So we've been talking about doing, continuing that, both for police, but also doing that for fire.
That was the grant that we received to do that?
Yeah, well, the grant covered part of it. The grant's expired, the grant's gone now, but.
We utilize the grant.
Yeah.
So right now, the fire department's looking at it to bring in fully qualified firefighters from other departments and giving them that bonus as a signing bonus to draw them into Redford Township.
And then how long would they have to stay?
It's a four-year window. That they, if they left within four years, they would have to pay a portion, yes.
Okay, good. Just going to do it for lateral, it's not, not pressure.
And it's, that's for lateral because our other options were for those that aren't fully trained, like a paramedic, paying for their fire training. We wouldn't give them any extra money other than paying for that class. And then same for if we brought a firefighter in to pay for their medic school. But the ideal would be getting the fully qualified from, I'm just going to use Livonia. And say, hey, you come over here, we're going to give you a $10,000 signing bonus if you come over here. I can use them in five days, right?
Oh, yeah.
They're working, whereas having to wait for everyone else to get down the road.
And the salaries would be comparable.
Salaries would be, would be closer. They're not 100% comparable, but they're closer, so.
I mean, but the $10,000 is a one-time bonus.
Correct.
If you're looking, if I'm comparing the salaries from Livonia to Redford, they've got to be comparable for the $10,000 to even be an incentive.
Correct. And that's where the conversation with the whole healthcare comes into play. Because they would be closer, I think Livonia would still be a little bit higher, but then we take out our healthcare costs, we drive it back down.
So we're clear that the goal is here is for to look at the budget and see where we can come up 100% HSA payment, correct?
Yes, please.
And make sure we look at how this might affect retirees, what I wrote down, anything else?
With the retirees, I would say, isn't the largest portion of the retirees on Medicare? And on Medicare Part A and Part B, so that all we're paying for is the supplemental? That's why I don't understand why they have to be in the same plan as everybody else.
It's not really that group, it's the, it's the people who retired at 45 until they get to 65.
Got it. Are there quite a few of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the group, yeah. So I, I mean.
I missed that.
I mean, what else? If that's the direction that I'm being given right now from the board, I mean, I feel comfortable in saying that I can make that work within this budget. With the only thing that I think I might have to change would be paying off the engine.
Okay.
Given the choice between.
I got you.
Yeah. Paying off the truck early. Like why pay half a mil's early when you can't afford to pay your healthcare, you know?
If I have no one to drive the truck, doesn't matter if I'm paying it off earlier or not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, I'd rather have, you know, more staffing.
Yes, and have your employees.
100%.
Yeah.
It's not just recruitment, it's retention as well. And people are going to other departments. I mean, healthcare's a huge one. I mean, we haven't had a retirement since 2020 and we have nine openings right now. And majority of the spots were filled, you know, so it's recruiting and it's retention at the same time.
Okay. Anything else on the general fund? On the general fund?
Happy, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, happy now?
She's got a list going, Adam, so don't worry.
My question came from actually going through the whole budget.
Yeah, do you want to go back to the general fund or do you want me to finish the other funds first?
Oh, go ahead and finish. I'm not sure if, you know, which fund.
Yeah, I know, right? So the rest of this, there isn't a lot to talk about on the non-general funds. Most of them are pretty simple. I do want to talk a bit about the SAD, that was the other part of the handouts. So in, so now we're into the other funds. The only staffing change that is being requested in here that is non-general fund is to add a third DPW maintenance to employee. That department used to have six, we've been happy to get them to two. Mike tells me it would do a lot to be able to get them back to three. So that's what that is. And for some reason, we ran into a budget crunch, we could split that person between central maintenance and solid waste. But I think we have enough room, I'm not worried about carrying it in central maintenance.
How did we manage to go from six to two?
That would be back in 2007 when we laid everybody off, you know, like.
I know, but their amount of work would still be there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We just fired the second person two years ago. They only had one person for probably six years.
Yep, crazy.
I mean, if you want to find more money for, even two more people, I'll be happy.
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Finding all this money.
Got to ask, right?
I'm just, you know, looking out for our employees.
Yeah.
The next slide is, we see most of our other funds don't have any major changes. Solid waste, ordinance, phone enforcement, inogen defense, forfeitures, GDA, recruited employee benefits, dial-to-ride, central vehicle maintenance, no major changes there. I just want to talk about a couple of them. The first one being the E911 Service Fund, which is Fund 261. We budgeted three out of our eight dispatchers here. And they will be paying for part of this massive upgrade to the whole dispatch system. So that's a $750,000 project. I'm expecting 550,000 of it to come out of the SAD and the balance of it to come out of the reserves of this fund. And, oh, I actually meant to take the forfeitures slide out, that is a repeat from last year, there's nothing to say about it. Fund 282, which is state and local fiscal recovery funds CARPA. So, and that is, goes along with this handout. Okay? So as of 12/31, we have spent 10.49 million, we've committed additional 1.37. We have plans to commit by 3/31, an additional 9.92, which leaves us with 181,000 dollars that is unallocated. So that's 181,000 dollars that is subject to that. You either have to spend it by December 31st of 2024 or it has to be under contract by December 31st of this year. And so that, we have very finite ways in which we can spend that money. And when I look at this right now, the only places that I see where we can conceivably spend that 181,000 dollars that I think would work would either be to pay for something related to the CSO basins, to pay for something related to lead lines, or to apply it towards the boiler and the community center. Those are the only two places I can see us spending that money and qualifying.
The current community center or the new?
The current.
Adam, could we do sidewalks?
No. No.
You had to take a flight.
Can. So, um, so I, I mean, I mean, the easiest thing probably would be lead lines. We already allocated $900,000 towards lead lines. We've been going through this lead emergency, right, and we've had lots of questions. I think, I'm sure Director Dennis can find a way to spend another $180,000 related to lead, right?
We don't have enough money to cover that.
I'll take it.
To cover what?
The lead.
Not all of it, no.
We probably need 30, 40 million dollars.
Yeah.
So 180,000 would be in properly, yeah.
I will say this, though, just, just, just on that topic is that the money that ARPA did, and we've, we've added a couple others, it could help us out right now. The thing that Eagle, how their shock and awe campaign is out there, is that we have to go from testing 30 houses, which we can afford it, six every six months. And, but they also don't want us to do any work because we have to have 60 samples. So if we start finding, identifying, say, 10 houses, they want 60 samples. Well, how can I give you 60 samples when I'm, every time I find anyone, I want to go fix it? No, 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 you can't fix it. Well, then, don't find me violation. They want 60 houses that we can identify as lead. And I can tell you, out of the, the first, the, the event that we did in November, we had hundreds of people, and we, there was only, out of 300, 400, 30 houses, you know, so, you know, we, but we want to keep them on a list. So, I mean, this, one, yeah, we could probably put it to the current project, which right now we have a hole because of the, the weather. We could take it, it'd be great to use because it would save the, the water budget a little bit of money. Maybe it's $180,000. The average house is costing about close to $8,000 to, to replace a line. So, we do, we do 20 houses. So, and we are applying for an investigation grant that's due tomorrow, and that was $600,000 will help us identify 400 unknown properties that we don't know. So, we have 4,000 unknown properties. From 1900 to 1949, Redford didn't keep any records on water. They did, they're in a box somewhere. So, we can't find them, so we have to identify these now. So, yeah, about the houses that were built before we really grew in the 1950s. So, fun stuff in lead. But, yeah, that would be great if we could, I mean, if it's there, but we also need a boiler, too.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. You know, it's, it's something that we get, the people are all worked up about the lead and upset, and this will help. We can say we're doing something from us directly, we're not depending on somebody else that we're doing directly. I think, to me, that seems like the logical thing to do. But lead is the, the big issue.
Adam, to, to the chair?
Yes. Oh, Kavanaugh's then.
A quick question, if you do, let's say, put it towards the CSO, how does that work? If we're, or when we're going to break ground, or when that's gonna happen, if we have to spend it? Okay, so-
Yeah, I would use it for the, I would use it maybe for some of the design work.
Okay.
Because I want to get this done and out, right? Like-
It's already funded.
But it hasn't been paid for yet.
Well, I'm just saying, it's-
Don't you know that we spend that money?
Community center is important, by the way. I mean, they-
Well, the community center is definitely important because we talked about this when we created the new recreation center, that we didn't have enough money to make and move everything fully over there. So we do have township staff that are still in that building, that are gonna be working out of that building. We know that the boiler right now, we have rooms that are 90 degrees in there because we can't fluctuate the temperature. And we're kind of, that building's always the last. I know it's not necessarily our building, but it does house our staff, and it's gonna continue to house our staff, including all of our senior programs that are gonna be there.
How much is the boiler?
$300,000 is the estimate, yeah.
Yeah.
So-
We're gonna bid them out as a, as a, as a big bid, so we'll, so we're hoping that the immobilization we have bought will be cheaper for us.
Yes. We're hoping that that is on your agenda, your next meeting.
Okay, we're getting prices in quotes on the-
Here, right?
Yeah.
Next meeting, right?
Yeah.
That's what you told us. Next meeting.
Don't lie, don't lie.
I'm not lying.
Great first door, great first door.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's lying, that's lying.
Okay, so, we're talking about CSO basins and lead lines and all that, and I know that, I don't know what happened to the infrastructure money that Biden passed and where it actually went, if it just disappeared into ether, but can we use any of this money to hire a lobbyist to find that money to pay for CSO basins and to pay for lead lines and to get money for our cable? You know, somebody who can-
We can't use this $180,000 for lobbyists, no.
You can't, okay.
No. We, if we pay for the boiler with this, it frees me up money in a different pot that I could pay for the lobbyists from.
Got it, okay. Different bucket.
Different bucket, yeah.
I see, we need a boiler, we need a counter.
Accounting creativity.
And it sounds like we've got plenty of places that we can use.
Yeah.
Yes, but, so is there any strong preference between boiler, CSO, and lead lines?
Boiler, CSO.
Boiler.
It doesn't even-
Boiler, CSO was okay.
It doesn't even-
It's like a drop in the surface of the CSO, it's like a little piston into land.
Get bigger.
Boiler.
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 Okay, but two trustees saying boiler, one saying CSO, and one saying lead lines.
I heard another, I heard another boiler over here.
That Trilla first.
Theresa didn't get the vote.
I don't have a vote.
No.
No. I just think that it's just, it's, that bucket's too huge for CSO, it's not gonna make any impact whatsoever.
Exactly. We're gonna try to get big money for CSO. Somebody has to give us the money for that.
Yeah.
We gotta work on it. We gotta turn over rocks.
Again, it can sit there, and then if something happens, then- But we need it now for a building that we- No, no, what he said, that we can find money for the boiler and then sort of be creative with some other money as to find somebody who can go find us some money under a rock somewhere at the state, the county, or federal level.
Where is the infrastructure?
Where is the infrastructure money?
Somewhere in Lansing to DC and all, I would say.
It's hovering.
I don't believe there is any money.
That was the dilemma. See, the, the problem is that the vast majority of what Washington puts out, they're only willing to allocate either through the state or the county, sometimes the county, but generally the state level. So there, so Washington has sent money for the infrastructure bill to Lansing.
So we need some of that.
But figuring out how to get the money out of Lansing.
Yeah. Well, like, this way, the, the money that we're getting for a loan forgiveness for the CSO is out of the bill money, you know, BIL they call it. And that's the money that the state's using it, so we are getting money.
How much?
The $20 million.
So we got, that's about 10%?
That's the max they'll give you out of the program. They won't give any, any higher we've asked. We even asked about the south, and they said there'll be no money at that time for the south, and we're like, huh, for the CSO. But that's, so the, the state's getting the money, and they're allocating where they feel like it.
So what's the, where's the conversation on these CSO basins benefit other communities besides us?
Well, they don't, it's just us. It's our system. It's our combined sewer system. It's not Livonia coming in us or others, it's our-
It's just Redford?
Just Redford, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was, it was benefiting other communities.
No, it decreased so hard. So did a lot of, so it's hard.
A lot of it's not that.
So, but-
Yeah, that we were the pastor.
I do have a, a, I did share today, I do have a marketing sheet for YouTube, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, so.
Take a color.
Okay, well, going back to the ARPA sheet, so that, that'll take care of the, the rest of the ARPA, the only things that are ARPA that are not final yet would be the boiler then, the, and then the final hazard pay payment for POAM, which will happen later this year. And then that, and the remainder of the lead lines that was already allocated, the rest of it is pretty much done. Now, the other bucket that's a little interesting in here, so if you look on the second page of this-
Oh, Adam, I just, just had something, scroll fast, on your, on the category five, infrastructure, we just made a recent, I think we've on, we're on two payments. It may not just be in here, it just went through, I think, last week, you know?
Yes, but it was not as of 10/1 to 12/31.
Oh, yeah, I just went, it's about another $250,000, I just wanted to let you know. Sorry, I didn't see that. I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know.
This is as of 12/31.
Sorry, yeah, so I just, it is less.
I saw it.
Okay, all right.
Because our quarterly compliance report for this is due tomorrow, that's why I, no, I just, I just looked at it today. You're right, it's in there, we paid it.
Yes.
Okay, you look down category six, revenue replacement, see this general wages in FICA, fiscal year 2024, 9.9 million. So, what we're doing is, you were able to allocate up to $10 million to this category. So what we're doing is similar to what we did last year at the year-end budget amendment, I'm going to come to you and ask you to approve that we are going to pay for $9.9 million of the police and the fire departments with ARPA money. Because then the ARPA money has been allocated and spent. Then we will take that $9.9 million that the general fund was gonna use, 4.5 of it is still owed to the rec center to pay off the rest of the 11 million for the rec center. The rest of that money will be the remainder of the projects, which is the last page of this package. But those projects will no longer be under that 12/31 of '24 deadline. That's the benefit of doing this, it gives us out of the ARPA deadline. So that takes us to the very last page, which tells us, okay, how are we, what is the plan then right now to spend the remainder of that money? So there's approximately $5.4 million of it left, and the department heads and supervisor McCray and I have been meeting several times recently, and these are all of the projects that are in some form of process right now to look at, right? So we have the, like we said, we have the boilers, we have HVAC projects at multiple buildings, we have the gun range at the police department, we have the chiller at the police department, we have fixing the concrete apron at the South Fire Station, the bricks program at South Fire, doing all of that refurb to the office and living spaces at South Fire, that was the RP who just approved last week, the LED lights at the ballfields are Claude. I have the, I originally had the boiler for the community center here, so that'll go down to, instead of being 300, that'll go down to 120. It says 250. Town hall, the HVAC stuff here, the, we've been talking about doing some work to fix Elzenor Street outside here, the $2 million that we've kind of had earmarked for a while now for Five Mile, that's all in here. So none of those projects are under that time constraint anymore, which gives us the time to make sure they're done correctly. In this bucket, we will house and hold all of this money until the board makes formal decisions in the 402 fund. That's where we store money for capital projects that we're budgeting for over time, is the 402 fund. Out of this bucket, we have about $250,000 that is still unallocated, but there's no time crunch.
Can this money be invested, or is it already invested?
It already is. And the investment revenue does not have to be spent on ARPA things, if it was right back into the general fund?
Mine.
Yep.
Tell me how you feel.
Um, it says something like lobbying, we could figure the lobbying out of this sheet.
Okay.
Right?
Sidewalk.
So that's what this was, okay.
Nice try.
So then, the final thing that relates to is because I brought up the 402 fund, I wanted to talk about that briefly, and that's this last one-sheet handout. So this shows you right now, in this one-sheet handout, what is currently sitting in the 402 fund. And so I move money in and out of here each year based on what's happening with our capital plans and projects, right? So, we try to budget a consistent amount year after year, but we don't spend the same amount every year, and so that's why money moves in and out of here. And we store money in here when we're waiting to do things, like, we put money aside for a couple of years, waiting to do like the craft park, parking lot, right? So we had to wait a couple of years to get the money. We've been putting money aside here because I want to do this massive BSNA upgrade, take the whole thing to the cloud, but it's going to be like a half-million-dollar project. So we've been slowly putting money in here for several years.
When you do that, can we get a darker printed budget?
Can we get a what?
A darker printed budget.
So, I just, because we came up today, we don't typically talk about this department a whole lot, I just wanted to show you guys what was in there right now. So, the projection is as of the end of this year, we'll have 425,000 in there for IT stuff. We have this random $2,600 in there for elections, I don't know what that was originally for, it's been in there for years. We have about $150,000 for buildings and grounds, so that could be money that we could use for the marquee, if we don't take it from somewhere else, that's money, that's township buildings.
What's general government?
That was the set aside we did last year. I asked you guys just to do that, that's where I want to put money. I'd like to get that to at least like 1.5 million to buffer the first couple of years of operations for the rec center. That's what I'm hoping that will turn into. We have some stuff related to police and fire, which all goes back to their capital plans. We've been setting money aside for parks and rock, so there's $240,000 in there right now. And then there's interest that is accrued in there that's not technically allocated to any of the budgets. So there's a couple million dollars sitting in there, which is good for us because that allows us to do capital projects as we need, needed to. So the next time you see this, I, it probably will also be showing the money, the rest of the ARPA money that I moved here to be, for holding.
Okay.
Last couple slides. Fund 423, the wellness center was created for the building fund, that's all this says, just so you know, it's Fund 423. Fund 536, this is Minoc, the city's citizens, they are not projecting a run increase for this year in their major capital projects, as they plan to redo the parking lot and the sidewalks, replace all the stove tops, replace all the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detectors. Glenhurst, of course, continues to do well. We had 44,000 players through November, we had 46,000 the year before, so it's down slightly, but we think that's due to that massive storm in July, remember caused all that damage and issues. Their capital, they're requesting a new greens master and a grounds master for next year. I put this on here because their contract is up this spring, and so we're actively negotiating that with them right now, so that'll be coming to the board soon.
I thought we were also looking at upgrading that, the building.
We are, we are, and we had several meetings about that, yes, you know, Theresa, we put it all on hold, we got some great ideas back from them, we put it on hold until this rec center gets moving more, just too much at one time.
We can tell you that we are extremely pleased with Sedak Group, though, who worked with us to figure out, right, and weight trim as well, and pricing, and like a design of a building that could be done, so.
Looked cool.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's gonna be great, Kim.
So, we're sitting on that 2 million for the DDA with no solid plans for it.
For the DDA?
It's Five Mile Telegraph.
Oh, that, yes.
We're sitting on that, we have no solid plans on what that looks like, or what that We're sitting on that, we have no solid plans on what that looks like, or what that cost would be, or what that money would be used for. Would something like upgrading the Glenhurst be more fiscally beneficial for the township revenue wise? Would it actually generate more revenue for the township if we had a nice clubhouse there versus sitting on DDA money that we really don't have any solid plans for?
I, that's an interesting question, but right now, I would say we haven't done enough analysis about making sure that facility is going to break even as a rental facility.
Okay. It's just something to think about.
We need more analysis.
For financial.
So if I'm not sure it's going to break even, then I can't expect that it's going to make money yet.
Okay, fair enough.
And we also felt that, pretty confident that with what we have right now, with some reserves and some personal funding, we, we might be able to finance it a different way.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that's true.
But I don't know, Adam, did you want to, I don't know if you wanted to bring up maybe not the bridge, do we want to?
The pedestrian bridge?
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't planning on, but we can.
I was just going to bring up, I didn't know, because I know you mentioned about the DDA and if that's not going to be spent or not. We did talk about trying to figure out a way that we're able to connect.
A beach.
That beach daily corridor between basically South Redford and North Redford, because we're currently western spans across between Beach and Gangster, there's no safe passage for residents to walk or bike or traverse that area. So just a food for thought, we've kind of thrown it out a couple of times.
That fits into the master plan of making us more walkable, especially with the new community center going in, we need to be able to have a way for people to walk there. So that might actually be better funds spent, uh, that two million.
And it's just in general, because there's that, there's that barricade that people can't get from the north to the south, and that will bridge it and.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
It related to that, that's why I, it was really important to me to find a way and whatever, to get us out from this time crunch, because I feel like there's multiple good ideas that are out there, but there's a finite amount of funds, right? So what is the right thing to do at this time, right? And, and maybe it isn't the Five Mile project, maybe it's that bridge, or maybe, maybe like, but I feel like you need more time to really analyze that.
So that money will be sitting there, and we'll have time to look and see where it's going to be used.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that was really the other fund, two eighty-seven, CDBG, we'll present that once Washington tells Michelle how much money she has. Um, water and sewer, we will do in June as we usually do, and we just got information today from Leewa, right?
Leewa's looking at a three percent increase for water, or three point two five for water, three percent for sewer. Uh, they keep it under four percent due to inflation, and that was a promise they made. So three percent is not too bad to say the world again.
It isn't. Um, and then the CSOPs in central and south, running continues, that'll be on the agenda the next few months. So that is it for the slides. At this point, we're just open to questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, on the revenue sharing.
Yeah.
It's budgeted at five point five million, and so far, only two point seven has been received. So are we going to get that other by the end of March?
Yes.
Um, general government, insurance and bonds was budgeted at eight hundred thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four, but the projected expenses for the current year is over a million. What happened to have that two hundred thousand dollar increase?
That's a year end journal entry. So the general, right now, that's the bill for all of the insurance, when she does the journal entry, some of it will go to water, some of it will go to building, some of it will go to all of.
Oh, it just gets reallocated to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, gather. Um, this is yours. General pension, the treasurer's office, the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three forty. For twenty-four, twenty-five is two eleven, six fifty. Why such a large increase?
So that goes back to.
Same amount of people.
That goes back to what Japlin's thing, it's about changing, it's how the number of people in the division changed and how the cost is being allocated.
So the number of people in the treasurer's office is being changed?
It's not, it's not the number of people in her office has been changed, but the number of people that are in that division township wide has changed.
Okay.
So the cost per employee has gone up.
Okay. You answered the one about the marquee building, I was wondering why the miscellaneous went from five to a hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah.
So that was the rule.
Yep.
Uh, police department, salaries and wages holiday, the budget in twenty-three, twenty-four was forty thousand dollars, but the projected current year is eighty-one thousand, and the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five is a hundred and ten. So what's happening with just such a small, what I would assume will be a small?
Yeah, that was kind of a weird one. So the contract between the POAM and the COAM is a little interesting, because what happens is that when someone from POAM is promoted to COAM, they all of a sudden get a holiday check, when they weren't getting one before. And so they weren't getting it before unless they worked the holiday. And so what has happened is that because so many people left so quickly out of the department unexpectedly, we had a whole bunch of people get promoted to COAM, and that drove that cost up much more quickly than we expected.
Okay.
So it, we shouldn't have that kind of a change again, um, but I think that the number, I think the one-ten is going to be the more accurate number.
So they just, it, you just off the top, when you go from POAM to COAM, you get a check for holiday pay?
Yeah, and it's several thousand dollars.
How's that work?
Our contract is, we get paid. Yeah, it's just contractual. We, we get a certain number of holidays, whether we work it or not. So if I work it, I don't get holiday pay.
Yeah, okay.
I just get this check.
Check.
Whereas the POAM, they're only getting holiday pay on the ones they work. So some of them make a lot more than others, depending on how it falls.
How it fluctuates.
Okay, and police and fire pension, the budget is one point nine million for the current year, but the current, I mean, it's one point nine million, the current year projection is sixty-one thousand, five hundred, and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is three point seven million. So that's some wild fluctuations there.
Yeah, this one actually goes up your last one, if you want to say that one too, about retiree healthcare, the, the answer's the same.
Oh, okay.
For both of them. So, um, you had the same question with retiree healthcare, right?
Right.
The budget was eight sixty-one, the projected is zero, and the new budget is one point two million.
Million.
So what's happening here is this is related to the SAD being pulled out. So we decided that in the current year budget, what we do is we had part of retiree healthcare in like the general fund police, and part of retiree healthcare in SAD police, and same with the pension, right, for, and same thing, we had part of it in the general fund and part of it in the SAD. But because all of it, that is all paid for with Act three forty-five money, which comes into the general fund, when we moved the SAD money over, we didn't move this portion. So now you're seeing the total amount for both the SAD and the general fund and one line. So if you went back into the budget, and you went into this year's budget, and you looked at both the SAD side and the general fund side, and you added the two numbers together, you'd be right at about this, like three point seven million.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay, that's all I got.
Cool.
Question. Adam, I have a couple of things.
Lily, yeah.
I just want, right. Um, how is it you're going to readjust the budget with certain, um, individuals that are being paid out of ARPA currently? How is that going to be adjusted?
I think until I receive direction from the board as to what they want to do with those positions, I, I don't have any plans to adjust them.
So you're going to come to us with the list of?
Yeah.
The individual, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, um, first thing, regarding business licenses and permits, I just wanted to remind you that Lord Will and Craigville Rise will have the marijuana thing of them running in a few months, and that's going to be an additional five thousand dollars for each license each year. So that revenue may go up from the ten that you've got projected.
Oh, good.
Um, I'd also like to wonder, does ACO, when she charges a fine, does that go to the ports, or does that go to the ACO's budget as revenue?
General fund?
Goes right, goes into the.
Yeah, ticket fines and ordinance fines and stuff like that never go to our budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
It always gets dumped back in the general fund.
So that's going to be under fines and things as revenue. Um, the IT, you had mentioned that VC three was going to be on site twice a week?
They are now.
They are now, yeah.
Yeah.
And your intention with this new IT project manager is that to drop back down to once a week? Because I noticed the budget went from a hundred and forty thousand projected for this year, or twenty-three, twenty-four, to two hundred and fifteen thousand for contractual services.
Uh, well, that, I think it's more than just that, though.
It, it's got, the BSNA is fifty-five and onsite.
About thirty or thirty-five thousand basically for the year. So we bumped them to two because Chuck has not been able to work as much, and I don't want to be as reliant on Chuck.
And that's a hundred and sixty thousand a year for two visits a week is what you've got here in the.
Well.
In the foot.
No, it's, it's like seventy thousand a year, and then, then their main contract.
Okay.
So I think their main contract is like a hundred and forty, and then the two visits is like seventy, that's how you get to the two fifteen.
Plus the BSNA is in there too.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that I think that once we hire this IT coordinator, I'll be able to drop them back down.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if the intention was to drop that down?
Yes, I'm only doing it right now because I have to make sure that I have coverage, and that's, that's what I need to do, right, coverage.
All right. What happened to our software budget this year? Went from five thousand to a hundred and eighty-three thousand.
In this year's budget?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, original budget was five thousand for software, reoccurring, actively it's one eighty-three, five ten.
What line?
It is page fifty-two. On page fifty-two, you see the, the budget for this year for software was five thousand, original budget, and the activity is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ten.
Oh.
And then it's gone back down to six.
Some of that is the, we owed the double year of coverage, what was that for?
Watch guard.
Watch guard.
So the body cams.
The body cams, so some of that was because we had to make up a year of payments, we missed a year.
Uh, some of us may not have known that it existed.
Yes. So that, so that is that thirty thousand, you can see it in her request for the next year, the thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So sixty thousand of that one eighty-three is that alone. So if you notice, her request for next year is sixty thousand.
Well, the watch guard, it looks like it's thirteen thousand.
No, that's the opposite, three sixty-five. The watch guard is the thirty.
The watch guard's thirty thousand. Oh, so the power DMS is seven thousand then for the power DMS, okay, I thought thirty thousand for power DMS.
So that was, that was, that was the big chunk of it, I'd have to look at what else.
Okay.
But we've been, we have been actively working to, Jen and I have actively been working to better allocate, because I think there are things that were not being allocated, the software that works software, and that's kind of like, we, I feel like it's been an onion, we've been working our way through that puzzle.
There was things in other lines, and so a lot of the shuffling, like that sixty thousand, that thirty thousand dollars a year, and Scott and I didn't even know it existed.
Yeah, when they signed the contract, it was obviously.
That never made it talk.
And so that's when we got the bill, we had to find out that actually this is a recurring cost for the, the cloud and software.
That's for the cloud for all of the cameras, six thousand a year.
No, well, moving forward, it'll be thirty thousand a year.
Okay.
But we hit thirty in the rear, thirty for this year, that all came due.
So out of the hundred and eighty-three, sixty is your camera cloud payment, but that would still have a huge hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, then you have another thirty thousand, just the regular stuff, so that could be down to ninety, and then I'd have to look up what the ninety is. But, I mean, there were a lot of things that happened this year, I remember the security issues that happened, we had to buy some stuff related to that.
Sold, that's not where it'd be over there.
I mean, I can certainly look.
I'm just, it was just a huge.
It is a huge jump.
From five grand to a hundred and eighty-three grand.
Wow.
That was big under budget, or over budget. Okay, I think that was it for me, that was one of the things that popped out for me. Adam?
Lily?
Good question. Will the IT manager or the manager who's going to be hired, will he be handling what he's planning on doing with fiber?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I want some of our project management skills, because that is the thing that we don't have right now in the IT department, that is just driving, I just, I just don't have the capacity to handle it, right? And that's an issue, the upgrade of the phones, I mean, like, I, I need someone that can assign that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because I think we have to start talking about how to set aside some money also for either whether we have somebody put down the fiber, or if we're going to do it ourselves. So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
How much do you have budgeted for the IT person?
Well, it's part-time, I want to say like seventy thousand. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Supervisor? So other than, I've gotten the direction to work out how to pay for the HSA.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Other than that, and if I can do that without making any major changes, other than having to change the engine allocation, do we need another study session, or do you trust me to handle that and prep it based on that?
We trust you.
And I'll work with it, obviously.
It's in there, as they say. It's in there.
It does a good job.
No.
It's in the song.
When we have something, we can tell them, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted, yeah, exactly, so. I'm sure I'll have more news for you at our next meeting, then, yeah.
And that we can let the employees know so they can budget personally without.
Well, we do have to do that, because it does have a big impact on us, because payroll and HR now have to go back into every single employee and modify their deduction. And we're going to have to figure out how to refund the people who've already made contributions, then we're going to have to figure out, there were some people.
No, no, we need to do that.
It's only, it's just, in January, it just started. So you fund the HSA deductible now, and if they happen to put a hundred bucks into it?
Just tell them that that's just in there.
Yeah.
I think the fire department, though, you may be the special case, as usual.
Special.
Sorry. Because you guys got your ARPA paychecks, and some of you put that towards your HSA, that would put you over.
And, you know, Teresa had a good point, is that you can always, if you, like, Kyle already made a payment for his nut, you can always submit a reimbursement into his HSA to get paid back for that, so we don't have to worry about making any payroll changes for the first.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, like.
The thing is, I do want to put out before we, before you guys adjourn, is that you're approving this for an April first budget.
Right.
Which means we can't make that deposit until at least April first.
Okay.
Right.
Just to make sure everyone understands that.
That's a good point.
They can still submit a reimbursement back to January, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You haven't, you won't have actually authorized the expense until April first.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything else? Anybody? Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Adam.
Great job.
Japlin.
Great job.
Japlin.
Yeah.
Japlin.